Okay. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Mint Hill Planning Board, November the 22nd, 2021. We do have a quorum, and I would ask Chip if you would have our invocation.
Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this night. We just thank you for the, this town that we live in and all those that serve it. We pray for all those here this evening discussing their opportunities. Pray for clarity, and we just pray for this board that we understand and listen well. And, Lord, we just thank you. We just give you all the praise and glory. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chip. Just like to bring a welcome from our chairman, who is still recuperating from some medical issues, so I'm sitting in for him tonight. A little bit of an echo there. We're good? Well, let's just move on to item three, approval of minutes of our October 18th regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion appears to have carried. The motion has carried. Item four, addition, deletion to the agenda items. John, or anything that we need to add or change?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Reports on committees, members, and staff. John, we're good? Okay, any old business to come before the planning board tonight? All right, then we'll move to item seven, new business. And item A is discussion recommendation on ZZ 21-13. Let's start, Chip, with you on your end. Questions? John, do you have anything to present for? Excuse me.
Well, I have the applicant here. If you would like, he can run through the site plan with you and kind of go over what he does, and then we'll get into some questions.
You'll be good.
Good evening. So my name is Steve Price with RH Price Incorporated.
Welcome.
So we're currently looking at this site to use for basically just a construction yard. So we've got shown there like an office warehouse space in the upper left, then construction yard with a couple of warehouse spaces on the other side of the creek, with a culvert crossing of the creek.
Okay, now, Chip.
Um, how big is this? How big is this lot?
The entire lot, I think, is 15 acres.
And it's going to be, you said, construction. You'd be storing supplies and...
Yes, equipment, pipe, materials, things like that.
Vehicles, a lot of construction vehicles?
Trucks. Yeah.
This is pretty much the last lot in that little section up there, isn't it? That's been...
There are quite a few lots undeveloped.
Okay.
But there are, I think, this is one of the last ones to be sold.
Right, right.
Yes.
These are two lots.
This, okay.
Yeah, two, okay, yes, two lots.
I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything else?
Okay, Scott?
The only thing I, there's not, is there any buffer requirements on this, John? I'm sorry? Is there any buffer requirements?
Yeah, and they show that in the drawing there with the color in the back.
And that thick pink line there?
Yeah, so remember, this part was...
Oh, our 50-foot. Yeah, we changed it.
Part was originally with 100.
100, that's what I was looking for.
And then we've got some buffers associated with the stream also. You can see the thick kind of corridor and then the, some swim buffers.
That's it.
Okay, Jennifer?
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Kenny?
I see you've got a 30-foot swim buffer and then a 35-foot swim buffer. Does that change? Somewhere's between those two points, or?
So that's a good question. So the engineers that drew this, I mean, that comes right off of the GIS information and the way the Army Corps set it up. I think that the stream actually, the stream itself, as it moves across the property, changes its, the qualification of it changes, and therefore the buffer changes a little bit. It was explained to me by our, when we did the wetland assessment.
Okay. Yes, the swim buffer is just by Mecklenburg County, but it's based on drainage basin. I didn't know, I didn't see the line that differentiated between the two. Have you submitted for your stream crossing? Your nationwide permit for that?
No, it was my understanding that if we kept it within a certain length, it limited the submittal requirements.
Yeah, it's the nationwide permit.
Right.
It still goes through the Corps.
I didn't think we had to have a full 401-404 with, if your disturbance of the stream was less than a certain linear feet, and I think that was how it was designed for.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Still have to permit it?
Yes.
So no, we weren't going to do that step. So those, some of those permitting steps come next.
Okay.
After we hopefully gain approval.
Okay, and then I guess you'll have, what's the height of these walls?
Some of those are pretty tall.
Yep.
They'll be, I mean, they're all engineered.
Okay.
Definitely.
And I guess you're going to tie into that sewer system?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's all questions I have.
Okay, thank you, Kenny. Jennifer, anything further? Scott?
Nope.
Chip?
Good.
Good. I just have one, John. All the i's dotted and t's crossed for the planning department?
Yes, sir.
In this request? So you're good? Anything that we need to look further into, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
Sir, I'll make a motion, favorable recommendation for case ZZ 21-13. Property owner, MHIP LLC, the applicant, JHP Holding, 13421 Jomack Drive, tax parcel 139-092-20, and 139-092-21. And also have a draft consistency statement that I need to add to this. ZZ 21-13 is consistent with the land use plan and is found to be reasonable and in the public interest, based on the information presented and reviewed with the rezoning application.
Have a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, likewise? Motion appears to carry. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up will be item B, discussion recommendation on ZZ 21-14. John, do we have an applicant, or anything you need to bring to us?
Yes, I'm going to ask Emily to come up and make a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Emily Buer. I'm a landscape architect and project manager for Stimel Associates and representing Mecklenburg County, who's the petitioner for the Azelle Farm Community Park rezoning.
Welcome.
Thank you. Quick background on the planning and design process that we've gone through up to this point. We had two community workshops that were held over the last year and a half to gather input and validate the programming for the proposed park. There had been a previous master plan done 12 years ago, and since there had been quite a bit of time that had gone on since then, we felt it was important to reengage the community and make sure that the programming for the park still met the community needs. So through those meetings, we were able to engage with the community members, understand what they want to see in the park, listen to what was important to them, and develop a new plan that met their current needs and will hopefully be a long-term asset for the community in the town of Mint Hill. Current schedule, we went before the planning board on the 15th, before you tonight, and then back to the Board of Commissioners on December 9th for decision. The site is located along Highway 51, bordered by Well Road and Mintwood Drive. It's just under 91 acres. It's currently zoned residential. It's vacant and also used as agriculture. A lot of the property is haved right now, and the surrounding uses are all residential. Our requested zoning is conditional for the residential, to be able to allow the park as a use on the property. And the future land use plan shows that the single-family residential, the 20,000 to 40,000 square foot lots is what was recommended. And since the park will be an extension of everyone's backyard, we feel like it's a good use for the land. The rezoning plan shows, there's a green shading over part of the plan, and that is what is to be developed as the first phase of the park, which includes the multi-use path along Matthews Mint Hill Road with a signalized pedestrian crossing, as well as an accessible trail connection to the southeastern edge of the property along Mintwood Drive, a basketball court, community garden enhancements, playground and splash pad with a restroom facility, a moat meadow, and an informal amphitheater, which is basically just a sloped lawn, and the parking to support those uses. The remainder of the proposed amenities will be developed at a later date as funding becomes available, and those uses include pickleball courts, a welcome center with a formal event lawn for that, a welcome center, a picnic shelter, agrarian amenities and orchard, and additional natural surface hiking trails and parking to support those uses. We've maintained a 100-foot recreation setback along the entire perimeter of the property, and most of the natural vegetation is being retained to protect and encourage the biodiversity and the wildlife habitats that are already out there. The technical data sheet has all the technical details, as well as the architectural renderings that show the intent of the welcome center and restroom facility on the property and the materials that we would like to propose to be used, which are to be earth toned and humble and retain, and be complementary to the land and kind of indicative of the historic and rural nature of the area. We are requesting four exceptions. The first one is that the petitioner is requesting exemption from the requirement dictating that sidewalks must be installed along all public streets, and instead proposing that the 12-foot wide multi-use path along Highway 51 frontage meet that requirement. A sidewalk easement will be provided where the path alignment is located outside of the public right-of-way. And then the internal accessible trail network will connect building entrances to the multi-use path and to a pedestrian access point in the southeastern corner of the property to allow for access from the neighborhoods to the south. The second exception we're requesting is the requirement dictating that curb and gutter must be installed along all public streets due to the fact that the existing road infrastructure is a ditch section in that area. And installing curb and gutter would increase and concentrate stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties instead of continuing to allow it to infiltrate through the vegetated conveyances. The third exemption is the requirement dictating that street trees must be installed along all public streets and proposing instead to preserve the majority of the existing vegetation along the front and side street property lines in lieu of planting new trees so that the rural and agrarian nature of the property, as viewed from the public way, may be retained. And the fourth, the petitioner is requesting the allowance for the park to be developed in a phased manner, as generally presented on the rezoning site plan, allowing the petitioner five years from the date of zoning approval to commence efforts to develop in accordance with the approved plan. And that will leave it for any questions.
Great, thank you. Let's start with Kenny.
I guess the sidewalk exemption, I can see that because we've got a pathway for pedestrians walking along Highway 51. They'll have to go up into the site, but I guess that will function. I guess my concern is, number one, the curb and gutter, if curb and gutter is not installed along Highway 51. If there's any other developments, they're going to install sidewalk, I mean curb and gutter. Does that mean this will never get curb and gutter?
It'll get curb and gutter when NCDOT comes through to do that widening project, if that's in their cross-section.
Do we know when that's planned?
Last, we met with them in February, and they said that it was, oh, gosh, 2029 right-of-way acquisition, construction in 2030, and they're probably going to have to redesign because of the timeline that's gone on. So the plans that we've all seen may not even be valid by the time that they get back to it again.
But, but to be clear, the curb and gutter, the ordinance would require it on Mintwood and Well. So the curb and gutter by ordinance would not be required on 51. So the only place we do that is if it's in the downtown. But typically state roads, we do not require curb and gutter.
Okay. So are we going to be installing curb and gutter not on Well Road, or is that what you're requesting the exemption for?
Yes.
What about sidewalk along the private roads, or the Well Road and Mintwood? Isn't that requirement?
Right, so that is an ordinance requirement, so they are asking for an exception to that. Now, again, 51 is excluded here because they are showing a multi-use path along 51 that would satisfy the sidewalk requirement. So really what we're talking about is the Mintwood and Well Road.
So if people develop on each side of it, then it would be, their sidewalk would just stop and terminate into nothing?
Yeah, so you're looking at, you know, possibly a future town project, or somehow to fill in the gap if it became necessary.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I've got.
Thank you, Kenny. Jennifer?
I do not have any questions.
Scott?
Nothing other than the trees along the street frontage. Why are we exempting that?
We'd like to retain what's already there.
Which is, what's there now?
It's pretty heavily vegetated along the Highway 51, and then, do you have an area?
Isn't it just grass? There's not trees currently along that frontage, is there?
There is. There's minimal areas where there's not trees.
I might be looking at it wrong.
I know the side all along Well Road is already vegetated.
Yeah, I think on Well Road it is.
The side along Mintwood is vegetated. The only area where there may not be much, or it may be sparse, is the corner of Mintwood and 51.
Basically, the first half is, and then when you turn and then come down Mintwood.
There's small trees.
There's some trees on Mintwood, yeah. So it's just that section, John?
Yeah. I could get a better look at it.
And a big, big reason behind that was because there were a lot of comments in our community workshops about, from the neighbors, wanting to really preserve that property for what it is. And so part of the reason of asking for that exemption is to retain the, as much existing character of the property as we can.
And the piece that's, doesn't have trees on it now is not going to be the piece you're developing in the first phase anyway, correct?
The closer to Well Road?
Yeah, because you're going to be on the Well Road side. Okay.
Thank you. Chip?
Yes. There was a large community garden in that area. Is that still going to be intact, or is this going to kind of take that over?
No, so that's going to remain in place. We have allocated space for it to expand if the community garden group feels like they need to add more plots, and we're adding a tool shed and material storage bin area for them to help facilitate their maintenance and proposing to upgrade their fence.
Okay, good, good. And just forgive me, my eyes, I can't, this writing's pretty small here, so. Parking for basketball, parking for pickleball, where is all of that going to be?
So that'll all be in that main parking lot built in the first phase near the welcome center, so where all the trees are kind of shown in that area. That's all parking that snakes along that entrance from Mintwood and kind of dies into where the splash pad and playground are, and then there.
How big, how big are the basketball courts and pickleball? I mean, were they, are they?
There's one full-size basketball court, and then I think we've allocated space for three pickleball courts.
Because I know that's a big thing that's kind of up and coming right now.
Yeah.
I think I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Scott? Any further questions?
Nope.
Jennifer? Thank you. Kenny? Anything else you'd like to bring up?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. I do have just a, just a couple of questions. And the, it's a lot to do with, if approved, what type of timeline on creating the first phase?
We were looking at starting design development and construction documents right after the New Year if approved. So that means we'll probably be going in for permit review, wait summer, early fall, with construction probably starting early 2023.
Okay, thank you. What about now, you're also on the exception of phased development, you know, asking for five years to build out, right, or develop out? What typically, you know, because you're, you know, to me, that's, that kind of goes hand in hand with the no sidewalks. Are you, is the rest of the plan typically going to, you know, include more trails or to connect the neighborhoods more to the park? Or, you know, my concern is people coming up Well Road or Mintwood, what's their access points?
So the trail to Mintwood would be part of the first phase. So those neighborhoods down there would have access from day one, once we're open.
Right. How about Well Road?
We have not allocated trails to Well Road since there's only a few large lots on that side. Didn't feel like it was needed from a density standpoint, but we could allocate a trail there in the future if it was deemed that it was needed or wanted from the community.
Okay, typically, does the county take five years to get this accomplished? I mean, they're asking for five years. How does the, you know, generally, how is the money appropriated, and how quick does this type of thing happen?
I'll answer if you want me to. So the original master plan was done 12 years ago, and the budget that was allocated for this project was based off of that plan and construction costs 12 years ago. Since there's, construction costs a lot more today, that's the reason that we don't have the money, the county doesn't have the money to do it all right now. So the idea is that we, you know, try to go get more CIP funding to build out the rest of it within that five-year period.
Okay. All right, thank you. John? Planning Department? You're, everything, again, my same question, everything here meets versus, you know, versus the notes here, everything here is good. We're good with the tree situation with trying to protect the integrity of the property. Town's good with this, because this is going to be a marquee piece out there on our main highway.
Yeah, and this has been a project, you know, we've talked about for a long time here, but everything is fine, I mean, including her, except, I mean, she's asking for exceptions too. And so I've pointed out the things that are in conflict with the ordinance, but this is conditional zoning, so that's certainly something that we can deviate from if you deem it necessary.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, next question would be, do you hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Make a motion for a favorable recommendation for ZZ 21-14, in that it is inconsistent, it is inconsistent with the land use plan, but the unified development ordinance allows consideration of a park in the R District through the conditional zoning process. And I also want to add a note to acknowledge that the future 118-foot R/W for the Matthews Mint Hill Road, nine feet of additional R/W right-of-way should be reserved.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? To the full board. Any further discussion? If hearing none, all in favor of the motion stated, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise? Motion appears to carry. Motion carries. Okay, next item is item C. Thank you, by the way. Item C, discussion decision on S 21-28. John?
Sir, this is a byright subdivision out on the Bears Road and Williams Road. You may be familiar with this site. We've, there's a little bit of history here. I think this was originally approved as a subdivision back in, guessing it was 2006. I can't remember the exact date, but it was sometime back then, and obviously they never built it. And this new builder has gone through several different versions, and they've landed here on this byright option, and this is 20,000 square foot lots, 125-foot width. Site plan appears to meet all of our ordinance requirements, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
If the applicant has anything they'd like to bring, if you'd step to the podium? I mean, if not, how about step to the podium in case for question answering? You'll just state your name, address?
My name's Scott Dorr, 2401 Berry Street in Charlotte, and I'm with the engineering firm doing the permitting. And this is Mike Shea. He's with Empire Communities. We'll be developing the homes out here.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's start off with Scott. Go ahead, jump, I'm just jumping.
I'm just looking, I don't, I don't think I've got anything right now.
Okay. Chip?
Yes, so how many access points to the neighborhood? I noticed, actually, I look at Tyler Brook. I lived on Tyler Brook about 15 years ago. So is that going to be an access off of, what is that, Kendallton Meadow down to Tyler Brook into the neighborhood? Is that going to be an access point to the neighborhood?
Yes, sir, we're going to have four. Two new access points, and then two connecting to the existing roads to the south.
Okay. Public hearing on this? Any, any issues from any of the neighbors? Anything that has come up, or have you had a public hearing?
No, being byright, we have not.
Okay.
I have met with most of the neighbors, and from what I understand, we don't have any issues.
Okay.
But if we do, I'm more than welcome to meet with them and handle them in a gracious way.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Jennifer?
I don't have anything.
Kenny?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I do, I do have one, one more. What, are the houses going to be all brick? Are they going to be siding in brick front? Or what's the design on the house?
We built in Summerwood. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with that community or not, but that's the product we intend to use here.
Okay.
And maybe like 3,000 to 4,700 square... And, um, maybe like three thousand to forty-seven hundred square feet, um, we anticipate them being in the half million dollar range, and, um, I, I think, I, I don't know, but I think y'all were okay with what we built in Summerwood, and, uh, I, I'd be proud to build another community in that home.
Yeah, that's fine, I was just curious as to what the siding was gonna look like, whether it's gonna be brick or siding on it, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Scott? Kenny or Jennifer, any, any other additional questions? All right, um, just have a couple on, um, on the plan now, because this is, this has been, you know, in the works for some time, um, John, is there, uh, anything from the, from your department?
No, sir, everything appears to meet the ordinance.
Okay, uh, well then the, uh, do we, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a favorable recommendation for, let me pull it up here, for S twenty-one dash twenty-eight, as filed by Merrick and Company, to subdivide the properties located at fourteen two five zero Cabarrus Road, tax parcel number one three nine dash four zero one dash zero two. I also would like to add from the staff recommendation that the trees, s- street trees are required on the internal streets and perimeter of street frontage of Cabarrus Road and Williams Road.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, vote by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion appears to carry, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much, Jim.
Okay, item eight, is there any other business to come before the planning board tonight? Seeing none, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.